The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:01. Secretary of Police, call and roll.
Kendra Barberina is here. Dennis Sabolski.
Here.
Jim Harb.
Here.
John Idzel.
Here.
Bob Dorshavet.
Here.
Keith Postel.
Here.
Bill Pratt.
Here.
And, um...
This one's dead, Dennis.
Oh.
Jim and I can show it.
Okay. Oh. And we, do we have a motion for the approval of this evening's agenda? I have no changes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve this evening's agenda as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the approval of our last meeting of July 18th.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the minutes as submitted for July 18th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And under new business, we have a presentation on the Phoenix Mill redevelopment presentation. And it's not a voting item for tonight, so I will just turn over the meeting to the presenters. And the floor is yours.
Thank you very much for having us here. My name is Melanie Markowitz. I'm with Wayne County Community Economic Development. And we're presenting something what we think is very, very exciting, not only for Plymouth Township and Wayne County, but for the entire region. It's part of, you know, an effort to improve parks and public spaces in Wayne County. We'd really like to focus on the CEO war and effort vision for Wayne County, improving parks and reactivating park spaces. And to that effort, we're bringing forward today a proposed purchase and development agreement for Phoenix Mill, which is one of the original Ford Village industry mills, six of which are situated on the Middle Rouge River. Phoenix Mill was built in 1922, was deeded over to Wayne County by Ford in 1948, where we've used it for various yard, you know, uses. It's been vacant since 2007, and we'd really like to turn it back to productive use as an asset for the community, a way to open it up for park space within Heinz Park, where it's been closed off to the public for more than 70 years. We've really focused on finding a developer that has been sensitive to this historic resource. We had a lot of interest in development of this property, but we wanted to make sure there was something that Plymouth Township was going to be in support of, something that the community was in support of, and working with Plymouth Township officials and planners. Thank you very much. And also our broker, NAI Farman. We think we've found the perfect purchaser and developer for this property that is really going to, you know, really place it within Heinz Park, open it up to the public, and have those historic preservation safeguards in place to make sure that it's celebrating that history and that cultural narrative for many generations to come. And I'm very happy to see so many folks from the preservation community here, and we're really excited to share this with you. As part of this purchase and development agreement, we have felt into the purchase and development agreement, a portion of language that really addresses the public access in a park setting of this resource, as well as the historic protection, specifically adherence to the Secretary Interior Standards for Rehabilitation in its redevelopment. And also in any future subsequent purchases, it is going to have those historic preservation safeguards as well, where it will be required to have all exterior alterations in accordance with the Secretary Interior Standards as well. And with that, I just wanted to hand it over to the proposed purchasers. And this would be Mr. Cox and Mr. Donaffrio. They have a lot of experience working with these mill assets and have redeveloped the Northville Valve Plant, if some of you are aware of that. But I'll let them speak to their experience because they speak for themselves. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for the introduction. I'm, my name is Greg Donaffrio. This is Mr. Richard Cox. We are part of Critical Mass LLC, who are the proposed developers of this project. So today, I'm going to briefly go over our development presentation that we've presented to Wayne County before with Ms. Laura Hall as representative of the township. So I will get right into it. I'm going to go over our vision and let you know what we're planning for this very unique space, how we plan to kind of honor the past through our thoughtful restoration, but also how we plan to integrate it into the park space. And then we're going to explain a little bit about who we are and why we think, and thank you, that the county thinks that we're the right people to take this very unique property and kind of turn it back over to the community. So this is a rendering that we did back during the bidding process to show what our intention was. You know, our vision is to, is like I said, twofold. It's to, number one is to restore the building. And we understand and respect that this building is a Henry Ford building, this building is an Albert Kahn building, a very unique building, not only for the Metro Detroit and the communities surrounding the, you know, Ford family of areas, but, but, but also kind of a important building for the larger, actually for the, for the U.S., for our history, as this building was very important in spreading, you know, mass transit across the country with Henry Ford and his vision for that. But also the role that it played in, you know, certainly the arsenal of democracy in World War II, this building played a very important part. Probably more importantly, the part that this building played in actually women in the workforce, as this building was employed all women and paid women at the same wage back in the twenties, that the men were getting paid in other village industries. So that was very unique. So, you know, our vision is to take this building, to bring it back, to restore it exactly to what it was before, with no significant alterations. I think you saw the overhead shot, there's a couple metal sheds out on the property. Those have no historical significance, so those, those need to go away. But the main building structure itself, our vision is to basically restore it, bring it back to life, and what it was intended to be back in, when it was built in 1922. So it's not just about restoring the building, but also for us, it's about integrating into the park space and opening it up to the community. So, you know, what's, we're very sensitive to how this building is in an area surrounded by park space, but the reality is, that, so I'm a, I'm a resident of the area, I drive, I've driven by that building every day for, you know, decades. And it's, it's been closed off. It's been fenced off since probably the forties, 1948, when the building was turned over to the County Roads Division. And before that, it's private manufacturing property. So really, prior to 1922 was the last time people got to probably roam freely on that land and enjoy the park space that it should be. So for us, it's also about integrating it into the park space and creating a place where people from all around Metro Detroit can come to this unique place and see kind of the history that this building has to offer. So like I mentioned, there's all these stories that this building has to tell. It's been closed off, so nobody has really gotten to see that building and kind of understand those stories. So, so our vision is basically to take this, restore this building, and within the building itself, we have identified and have two committed tenant partners that would be in there, that really fully embraced showing the themes of this building and the history through their decorations, through their use of the space. And we'll get to those tenant partners in a minute. But some of the, the concepts here that we really want to emphasize, you can see some of these pictures, each of the 19 Metro Detroit Village Industries, Henry Ford had a vision where he, he wanted to display the mechanisms for the hydraulic power that they all had. So whether it's the water wheel in the Northville Valve Plant, or for this building, or the Wilcox Building that had, you know, a hydraulic generator and a turbine underneath. So this building had a big generator tower, where that generator for decades of manufacturing was very prominent in this big, large window display. So our intent is, in one way or another, to bring that back, so that as you drive by that building, you see that generator sitting there, whether it's an actual generator that we're able to, to build and find, or, you know, some very tastefully done display.
I'll remember.
And you can, you can kind of see that, that was part of the rendering. That's why we feel we really need to be historically correct in bringing this building back to life. And then, of course, you see a lot of the pictures. So, you know, picture going to this site, let me back up, our two tenant partners in this building, the top level floor, which is, which is road level, is going to be a nice dining establishment that people will come to and enjoy. And there will be a banquet space underneath for people to have their retirement parties, for people to have their graduation parties, birthday parties, what, what have you. So those two business concepts were ones that we really wanted to put in this building because we felt that it would allow us to cycle community people through the building, to tell the story, to tell all the stories that this building has to share. If you have office space, we felt that's not a good use of the building, you know, maybe 20 people are going to enjoy it when they, when they work. Because of the size and the footprint, you can't do a lot of common hallways where people can wander off the street and enjoy it. So these two businesses, we felt were, were very appropriate for allowing the community to maximum enjoyment of the building itself. So if, so this rendering, this sketch that shows, one of the concepts that we've, we've presented here is really taking this space that's fully concrete pad right now, and actually turning it into enjoyable park space, with, of course, meeting the requirements for parking for the building square footage and the, and the occupancy. But other than that, turning it into nice green space, walking trails, connecting to existing walking trails that are within the Rouge Parkway. And we felt that our proposal really kind of connected with the Township's master plan, which I quoted here, really this open space community concept, that we're not looking to bulldoze trees, we're not looking to take away park space, we're actually through this project adding trees, we're adding wooded area, we're adding green space for everybody to enjoy. Here is another rendering that we had showed the, the county. Just again, you can see those two sheds in this area here. Those sheds would be removed, but our plan, based on our assessments of the building, a very structurally sound, really other than things trying to make it a little more ADA compliant, allowing access for, for the community, all the community to enjoy, there's really no planned modifications of this building. And that's why the addendum that we signed with the county really says that we are, we fully intend to have this registered in National Historic Places, which of course limits what we are allowed to do with that building, because like I said, we're all about restoring this building back to its original glory, not about creating new buildings, attachments, or anything like that. So we started to really work with our design team, our architects, to understand, well, what can we do with this space? How can we maximize the benefit to the community? So, you know, we are planning not only the trails and the benches and the bicycle parking racks that kind of allow people, more people to come to this building, this area, and use that as a launching point to then further discover the park space. So those are some of the things. And then we said, well, you know, maybe there's an opportunity for us to partner with, with the township and the county to say, how can we take Phoenix Lake, that's right across the street, and how can we potentially do something beneficial to the community, just from us being there with that business, with that building? Similar to the Wilcox Lake, you know, you see people out, walking around Wilcox Lake, people with canoes in Wilcox Lake. It's a little different of a lake, but, you know, the idea is how can, now that we have the momentum in this area, that we're bringing people to it now, you know, can we take Phoenix Lake and be part of turning that into something more beneficial to the community as well? So, you know, we kind of, we called that creating for the community. I'm a community member, I have a house in Plymouth, and, you know, it's very important to me as one of the developers to make sure that this is viewed by everybody in the community as a good thing, taking something that was gated off and turning it into something that is open, and invites people to come in and explore everything that's inside. So, and when I, when I talk about creating for the community, I want to bring up an example, and then we'll, so I'll kind of defer a little bit to what we've done in the past with a very similar Ford Village Industries. So there were 19 Village Industry factories that Henry Ford had. You know, the Ford Valve Plant was one of his big ones in downtown Northville, and that was purchased by Mr. Cox and his wife in 1994 from Ford. And over the last, you know, 25 years, they have poured money into it, restoring it to the original Henry Ford, Henry Ford architecture, Albert Kahn design, staying true to, to the original architecture. And in fact, you know, when I, when we signed up with the county to say, yeah, we'll, we'll absolutely put it on the National Historic Register, you know, we can say that, but the example in the Northville Valve Plant is a year after they purchased it on their own, without anybody telling them to, they, you know, Rick and Diane, his wife, put it on the National Historic Register, because it was important for them, that no matter what happens to the building, that it is safe and secure, so that, you know, if it passes down through the generations, somebody doesn't decide to just tear it down, because that would be really great condo space right at the entrance to downtown Northville. And when I, when I talked about, it's not just about restoring this very unique building, but it's also about integrating into the park space. Okay, so what, what is your history development team of, of doing this? How, how are you just not talking about this? How, how do I know you're going to do it? Well, the example is in 1994, with that purchase, it's pretty interesting, because that purchase included, I think, 14, 14.2 acres of space. And that space, this is the Ford Valve Plant, so another Henry Ford Village Industry building, this is the space. So they actually had purchased all of this land from Ford, which of course looks like nice park space. And what they immediately did was they worked with the city of Northville and said, okay, we're going to donate this park space to you, because the city of Northville doesn't have park space, and you want park space. So let's make sure that this is forevermore park space. So they donated it to the city, nine acres of the 14.2 acres that they bought, under the, under the agreement that this is park space forevermore. So that's where, when we talk about, you know, it's not just, yeah, we want park space, it's, you know, we really want park space. And that nine acres right now, you could put a price tag on what that's worth, if you wanted to put condos there. So, you know, that was the, kind of an example of some of the things that happened on the Northville Valve Plant. From our standpoint, our development team, Rick and myself, we worked together for the last 25 years. I was helping him from almost the very beginning demolition, all the way up through today, with the restoration of that building. You know, so how do we, the development team, you know, when we presented the county, we said, well, why us? I'll tell you why, because we have the relevant experience. We know exactly how to restore these buildings, very similar architecture, very unique brickwork that, that Albert Kahn did, very neat concrete interior structures, same exact windows. So, you know, we have a lot of experience and lessons learned from the last 25 years on how to do it properly. But also we have that supplier network. So, you know, we have a very good network of people that have done the exact same thing on the exact same things. The, the example is windows. So windows in that Valve Plant, you know, I don't know 25 or 30 years ago if you guys remember driving past that building. I have a picture here, I'll show you the inside, but, you know, the windows were totally redone, and it was nine thousand different windows. Every single one of them was replaced. And they were replacing all the original frames. So the easiest thing to do is buy a window with the Mullions built right in, stick it right in, and you're done. So they actually removed every single panel of glass, all 9,000 panels, completely, you know, cleaned up all the frames, painted all the frames, all the original mechanisms, the opening mechanism, and then put all low E glass in to this, where they had to find a supplier, develop the supplier, get that set up. We have that supplier now. These are the exact same windows. So we feel like as we go forward, we, we've kind of already gone down that path. So we feel from a velocity standpoint, you know, we're not looking to do this like, like overnight, but we are saying that our development team has the ability to leverage those supplier networks and, and kind of take it to the finish line, and open it up to the community probably a lot quicker than, than most. So, and then also, you know, we've been, like I said, I've driven by this building, going to Dearborn and Detroit over the last 20 some years, and you drive by and say, wow, there's all this potential, and, you know, eventually that momentum built to say, look, we have this experience, you know, and this building is for sale, let's, let's do the same thing here. So we actually, during the bid process, we started the architectural work, the design work, on our own money, at our own risk, just to say, it's worth the money to spend now to understand exactly what the layouts are, so we can start lining up potential tenant partners to get this building done the right way. So you can see some of what we've already done from the elevations of the building, the interior floor layouts of the building. So we have this momentum going already. And I kind of, I kind of go back to the Ford Valve Plant in Northville, because when I talk about the quality, okay, so we, okay, we can do it fast, er than most. It's still a historic building, so you still have to, you know, treat it as such. But you say, well, quality, you know, how do I know that you're going to restore it back to what Henry and Albert were alive today, that they would be proud of the restoration job? So many of you may have driven up Main Street and seen the water wheel churning again, so back in 1994, when the building was purchased from Ford, you know, one of the priorities was to get the water wheel back going again for the community benefit. And so that water wheel has been turning for a while, and then it, it stopped turning about a year ago, because, you know, it's, it's, it's steel, and just over time, it rusted. So, you know, Rick and his wife, I didn't cut the checks, they cut the checks, so I have to, but, you know, and I don't know if on the record I can say how much you spent on that, but, you know, it's six figures for a water wheel that gets them no financial return. And the benefit there is community enjoyment. So what you can see here is they went about it, Rick is a 40-year professionally licensed engineer, so I, I have a, did it just flip over? So I have a master's mechanical engineer, we're both engineers. And, you know, Rick set about taking the original prints from the original wheel and designing it in stainless steel, so that'll last another 90 years for the community benefit. So this is an example, and E&amp;E Manufacturing locally did the work right here in Plymouth. And they actually did all the sections of the stainless steel bolted all together, and today it's turning again. So it'll last for another 90 to 100 years before that needs to get replaced again. But that's, that's an example of thoughtful renovation, without, you know, do it right first, not so much do it cheap, right? So to us, this is a do it right type of project. And, you know, there's a picture of the Water Wheel Center, so, you know, what's neat about that is they have 12 tenants within the building, some very, very good professional engineers, architects, and that really helped push people into the city of, of Northville. So we have a lot of supporters in the city of Northville that are very appreciative for the quality of restoration that this building went through. But, you know, here is the terrific example of what the interior of that building looked like during the purchase. And this is, you know, 70,000 square foot building, it all looks like this. So, you know, now you're dealing with things that, you know, originated in the twenties, lead paint, asbestos, things, environmental concerns, that now you have a supplier network, you have, you know, your environmental team that understands the right way to do this. So this was a great example, and if you get a chance to walk through that building, even though they have 12 tenants, they've done a very nice job at opening it up with hallways for people to walk in, to walk down to the basement, see the Albert Kahn mushroom columns. Very, very thoughtful renovation. And that space, that space, you know, now looks like this today. And through that, through that renovation, you can see they kept a lot, in the picture on the left, they kept a lot of features, kind of a throwback, open ceilings, this is, this is an automotive factory feel still, all the original windows, like I mentioned. And then on the right, you can see, this is actually a valve chandelier that was created. This is one of those, just small touches, it's like a passion project, these Village Industries. We're both big Ford automotive buffs, history buffs, and you see this valve chandelier. So, so Rick, through, you know, his network with Ford and people at Roush, ended up actually creating, Rick designed, engineered, built this valve chandelier. So Ford supplied all these engine valves, and this is what this used to make, so in 1936, this factory made all the, all the valves for every vehicle that Ford made, except, I think, the Lincoln Continental. But, so this valve chandelier is now hanging in one of the office spaces, but it's an office space that everybody that walks down the hall can see, this is behind glass panels. So those are the kind of thoughtful features that you wander through, and you can still understand a little bit of the history of this, this building. And, you know, through it, I, I talked about the, the generator, and the generator is missing, and we're going to still lean on the county to try to go find that generator, because that was actually, that's an Edison, you know, generator, you know, Thomas Edison and Henry Ford were pals. So, you know, we feel that that is another neat thing that we have to have on display, whether we build it ourselves or not, you know, that's something we're still debating. But we want a generator back there. So you can see this old Worthington air compressor here, that, you know, most people would have probably removed, because that's probably valuable space for a tenant, but they actually spent a lot of time restoring and cleaning and restoring that. And now that's a prominent showpiece, that you can see kind of the size of some of the equipment that was in that factory. And these, these wood, these original wood doors, these big oak doors that were down a truck ramp down to the basement, were completely taken apart, completely restored, all the original hardware cleaned and restored and put back in place. So none of this was the cheap way to go, but it was all the right way, so that now, you know, at least once a day, when Rick takes somebody through the Northville Valve Plant on a tour, which has probably offered everybody in this community a tour through the Valve Plant, those are the features that start telling the story of what this building was, and we've done a great job trying to keep it that way. So one of the important things for us in this is, yeah, we want to open this up to the community. We're both community members, we're both, you know, have businesses and, and homes within the area. And not only do we want to make sure that it's open to the community, but we also want to make sure that community has a, has a part in the restoration and use of this. So we look for tenant partners that are local people. We turned away some bigger, bigger people that had come looking for the potential to be in here. So our local tenant partners were ones that we have an agreement with, that they are going to incorporate the themes, the arsenal of democracy, automotive history, Henry Ford, Albert Kahn, women in the workplace, into their businesses that will be there. That was very important for us. If we, if we go out and put some business in that says, no, 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 our design is different, we don't want this industrial feel, that wouldn't have been right. So, so Mr. and Mrs. Lucier, who operate two businesses, two restaurants in downtown Northville, are exclusive tenant partners for the restaurant space. So they have Table Five and Lucy and the Wolf, two very, very nice restaurants that I highly recommend. So they are going to build out and operate the restaurant space upstairs. And then on the downstairs, so another couple of pictures, if you're not familiar with those two businesses, this is Lucy and the Wolf. And then also, Mr. Andy Genetti is our other partner. So Genetti's Hole in the Wall in Northville. If you don't live in Northville, perhaps you've heard of them, they've been around since, I think, 1971 in that location. So longtime Northville established, Wayne County established restaurant, and they have a very good understanding of the banquet business, that kind of venue space. So what, what we want to do here is we partnered with Andy Genetti to bring that open banquet space there. So picture you go in for whatever event you want to hold, you know, maybe your next committee meeting, and you walk in the doors, and there's a nice 1922 model Ford T sitting right in the lobby, you know, which I already bought, so I hope you approve. You know, it, it had to be the right one, it had to be in 1922, and I just found the right one. So, so those are our local tenant partners. And then we say, okay, well, not only the people that operate it, okay, but what about the teams of people that are helping us do the restoration and the build out of these spaces? So Informed Studio is in downtown Northville. They are our design team that works with another architect that we've had working on the Northville Valve Plant for 25-plus years. So they have a very good understanding, they've done a lot of very neat developments in the city of Detroit and surrounding community. Additionally, our general contractor, we're using GS Fig, so they are right here in Plymouth. I think they relocated from Taylor recently, so they are a local contractor. And that's important, because part of the stipulation of the agreement that we absolutely agreed with from Wayne County is we need to use Wayne County labor to a certain percent. And Wayne County and Plymouth Township need to benefit from this. So, yeah, we absolutely committed to using the Wayne County required, you know, percentages of, of labor during the construction phase and then, then ongoing operating. So, so kind of through that, those are our local tenant partners, these are So kind of through that, those are our local tenant partners, these are some of our local partners that we've already been working with on designs, on architectural layouts. And then from a local support standpoint, so through doing the Northville Valve Plant, and then we actually have another project that we're also working on in this beginning, you probably have driven by the, what they call the stitching post building for a long time in downtown Northville. So that's all under construction right now. That used to be a Studebaker dealership, so we're car guys, we love that. And at one point in Northville, there were seven car dealerships, and now there are none. So that was a very neat building, so that same building is now being renovated, and what you'll see is you'll see a building that probably looks like, period correct, thoughtful renovation of the Studebaker building. But, so the local community in Northville's been very appreciative of what we've been able to do, and we just love working with our friends and partners in the community. So just some of the supporters that would absolutely vouch for us as the right development team to do a thoughtful restoration, and really make sure that it's a win-win-win, not only for us, but the community and then the government as well. You know, the mayor of Northville, Ken Roth, and the former city mayor, and they would all gladly vouch for us. And we called every one of those and said, look, you know, would you support us? They said, absolutely, have anybody call us anytime. And then Gary Collins is one of our strong supporters, he's a structural engineer, director of structural engineering in Albert Kahn, which is pretty neat. And we actually worked with, you know, their team and Ford to get the original drawings of some of the items in the Northville Valve Plant from their archives to allow us to correctly restore that valve plant building. And then also, some of the tenants that have been in the building, you know, can attest to maybe some of the restoration, the thoughtful restoration. I keep using that phrase thoughtful restoration because it's not just, you know, creating drywall walls with, you know, outlets and vent ducts, it's about, okay, how do I do that, but making it feel like it should for this type of building. And then also, we've had some good email exchanges with Henry Ford III, who's very interested to see what's happening with some of these buildings that are in his family legacy, so that's been very exciting for me. So, you know, that, to me, kind of sets it up as like, it's a little why us. So we have this vision that we feel that fits the township master plan very, very well. We're not taking away park space, we're opening up to the community. You know, also in the master plan, I think we talk about entrances to the township. So when I drive into the township, I don't know where the township is, and as you enter, that's kind of one of the entrances. And then, of course, it goes into the city, so I think in the township master plan, they talk about, you know, the connections between township and the surrounding areas as well. And we think, you know, this is kind of a building that is just slowly deteriorating into the earth, and we want to stop that. You know, for the last ten years, it's been completely vacant. They go in and turn the boilers on and turn the heat on, but other than that, you know, so when you go through it, some of the limestone sills, the concrete, you know, it's starting to deteriorate because water is getting where it shouldn't, it's starting to break things apart. So there's a lot of, you know, tuck pointing that needs to happen, there's a lot of brick restoration that needs to happen. And that's why, you know, we really feel that we, you know, we need to secure this building first and foremost so that it doesn't continue to deteriorate. If you go out there now, you know, if you saw that first picture, just weeds and vines and everything are growing right into it right now, just slowly, slowly ruining what is just a really neat piece of history for this area. So we think we have a very good vision that aligns with what we think the community wants, and we feel what the township wants from the master plan. We feel that based on our history, we're able to present very clearly a win-win-win scenario for everybody around. And then we have that very unique experience with the Village Industry Restoration already in the Ford Valve Plant examples that I mentioned. We already have a very good detailed development plan and suppliers lined up, suppliers that understand what needs to happen. And then we feel that we're doing it probably the right way, involving the community, not only in the running of this building long-term, but also in the restoration work as well. So that's a little bit about, kind of a brief overview. I'll throw up one of the pictures of the building and the layout, and that's my presentation. I'll open it up for questions if you have any.
Well, first of all, I have to commend you on your creativity and your compassion and commitment to this project. It's, in my opinion, very exciting and very sensitive to the historical nature of the particular building, and what you've done also in Northville, what I'll call in the greater Plymouth area. Any questions from the commission, and we'll open it up to the public?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
With your downstairs banquet operation, do you see building a dedicated kitchen downstairs, or will the tenant partners be shipping offsite from their main operation?
So that's a very good question. So we've had a few sit-down meetings already with Mr. Genetti and his partner, and because Mr. Genetti and the Luciers know each other very well, they have restaurants kind of next door to each other, there are opportunities to share some space, and then I think it comes down to operating patterns, do I need, what do I need in that space to do the business? So I think to begin with, there would be very minimal from a food preparation standpoint, and I think the business plan there would be, let's draw from upstairs, let's draw from two or three venues, or, you know, restaurants around that could bring in some options, and if you wanted to have...
Full kitchen upstairs.
Full kitchen upstairs, you know, potentially some warming operations and minimal kitchen operations downstairs, but then, of course, it depends on, you know, it depends on their business, how things are going, and what the demand is.
And second question, what is your ideal timeline?
So that's a very good question.
It's off.
The, just about now.
Back to secondary, in the middle, and be ready to operate it.
From a day standpoint, I believe we quoted in the presentation of about two-hundred-and-eighty-five days roughly to, from the time where we actually started our work. So we have that timeline, I think it's in a packet that you may have gotten. So the dates have shifted because this was presented in, I believe, February. That timing still stands from a day standpoint, we just have to work around the winter months, but there's some demolition of the sheds and parking lot preparation, breaking that concrete, hauling it out, getting ready to do the grass in that area. So, you know, probably about, I would say three-hundred days is probably a good, less, you know, less than a year.
Very good.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission?
Go ahead.
What is the capacity of the catering operation?
So I don't think we have the details yet on that. You know, the space is four-five-hundred square feet down below and pretty much the same up top. So four-five-hundred square feet, there's going to be some common space, so when you walk in, there's probably, you know, there's the model T sitting there, you'll have bathrooms, you'll have a little lobby area. So then the actual banquet venue space is a little smaller. But, you know, part of this too is we wanted to be able to take that whole current concrete parking lot area and turn it into something that people can enjoy from a park space standpoint. And the idea there is to allow that to kind of, the banquet venue space to spill out into that when needed, that they can enjoy the outside as well. So I can't give you a capacity as far as number of people, but, I mean, we would certainly have it to code so that, you know, based on the square footage we're at.
So your intent is to continue to own this building?
Absolutely.
I assume, and Brenda, just like, because you own the valve plant as well.
Can you go over to the mic so we can get it on the recording?
I wanted to share, we not only have decided that we want this building, the Water Wheel Building, my plan and my children and my grandchildren are already lined up to keep it operational for infinitum. And my six-and-a-half-year-old grandson was told, when we started the stainless water wheel, I said, Jasper, you know that we rebuilt the water wheel in stainless. And he said, yes, Pop, I know that. I said, when you're eighty, I want you to rebuild it, and I'll leave you the tooling and the prints. And he said, Pop, I'll take care of it, or I will have my son do it.
And kind of to that point, that's why in the addendum agreement, which of course can be made available, you know, we have very clearly, because the county had a very similar concern, well, you know, what if you decide to sell this building? Maybe somebody else has a different vision than yours. So they kind of captured it in that agreement that says, you know, if this building were ever to change hands, you know, we're basically putting a clause in there that says, you got to maintain the park space, you got to, you know, maintain the building, you can't tear it down, you can't do anything to it. We felt that was a given, but we put it in ink and sign, there's, yeah, absolutely. But our intention is to hold it forever.
Based on your experience, what will it take to put that building into the National Historic Register?
I, we hired a consultant when we did it on the Water Wheel Building, and it was not a big deal. The National Historic Registry, I don't know whether you're aware, that the original building was only ten thousand square feet in Northville. And they built, the first addition included the truck well, and then the second addition included what now is Planet Fitness. So there were two additions to that building, but the way the original front door was on the building, it was on the north side of the building. So there was really no entrance on the south side of the building. Our architect came up with the idea of putting that entry on the south side of the building. We built a model, we sent it to the National Historic Register, we got it approved, and we did it so that it looked like all three buildings were done simultaneously. So it isn't as hard as it seems, costs a little bit of money, but you hire the right consultants and you do it fairly easily.
Are you done?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Could you elaborate a little bit more about the land around the building and how you're going to encourage people to use it as park space?
Yeah, absolutely. So from this rendering, you know, I wish I had an aerial shot of what this looked like now, but, you know, essentially, you know, this whole area is all concrete. So, and it's all fenced off, so you can't even get into the property, there is no enjoying it for the last seventy years. So what we have, and you can see kind of that line that runs around, that's more of a retaining wall, you just step right over, but that's more because of the floodplain area issues that may come up. But as you can see here, so we have designed in trail space within the property. Now, the property will be open all times, and this specific portion of the property around, you know, we're thinking probably this specific portion, you know, if you'd like to, if you had a wedding venue there, and we think it would be very neat, I would, I wish I got married there, you know, picture that, I don't know if you know, but there's actually railing around the top of that building. That was actually bomb curtains that they put in during World War II, so that they could close curtains over the windows, so that if there was an air raid, you know, they wouldn't bomb the factories producing parts for our war efforts. So that still exists, so that's something we want to, you know, redo, restore, paint, and preserve that. But, you know, picture you could hang big, giant, white curtains from it for a wedding venue, it would be just this beautiful area. So that particular portion, if we had an event like that for the venue space, you know, that may be roped off for the event, but the remaining park space would always be open. And what's important to note is that there is parks, there is space here, so you can park your car here, although you're not supposed to, and you can wander, and you can wander along here. This is fenced off area, but you can, so this area continues to be open to the public. Any trails there continue to be open a hundred percent of the time, will never be closed off for any event, and we want to take those and we want to connect them onto the property. So it's the connection through the trails, and, you know, the, now people can, you know, you could bike along this trail, it's not going to dead end somewhere here, you're going to be able to go through the property and then back out, maybe, and we don't have a vision yet for this slice here, whether that's a bike trail or how that connects, you know, to the other side. But the intention is to have it open, half of it open all the time with the bike trails, and then that, probably that little section for events will get closed off, but for the most part, it would be open up as well.
Have you had any discussions with the county concerning the intersection of Northville Road and Heinz Drive? That is kind of an interesting intersection. I would think that if you're going to have a lot of people driving down there to get to your venue, because that's where all your parking is going to be, that Wayne County would be wise to put a stoplight there. Because, you know, that, the way that that, those two roads come together make the, make coming in or out of it, an interesting procedure, let me put it to you that way.
Yeah, that's a difficult left turn to make on a Northville Road from that area, I understand very well. So we haven't had that detailed level of discussion to understand what we would need to do, what the county would need to do, and how we would partner together. And we're certainly opening, open to working with them and whatever we would need to pitch in and do to make that...
The reason I ask that is that I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but both of those roads are county roads, and that they would be in control of the kind of traffic control at that intersection.
Yeah, that's a very good point, one that still needs to be worked out with the county.
Anything else before I open up?
I have one other question.
Yeah.
How about flood zone floodplains and how it interacts with your site plan there?
So the building itself is not in the floodplain, so if you look at the floodplain, it pretty much, you know, the building is built up a little bit, so it's actually technically out of the floodplain. So the parking lot area, we've been working with the architect to try to understand if it did flood, is a hundred-year floodplain, if it does flood, you know, how do we, how do we make sure that water comes in and then, you know, it doesn't bring a whole bunch of trash onto the property, or sweep stuff back away as the water recedes? And that's the point of the retaining wall that you see up there, that's why, that's an excellent point, this is why it would be very difficult if somebody wanted to come in and just throw a bunch of condos up here. So that's the retaining wall concept where we think we can, you can't, you're not going to prevent all the water from rushing if you had a, you know, major every hundred-year flood, but to control the water and the things from the property that want to kind of go back into the water.
Are there any wetlands areas that have been identified on that parcel?
No, sir.
Okay. Laura, do you have a spare mic there? I want to open it up to the public, but, yeah.
If I may, thank you very much for that very detailed presentation, your passion truly shows. I just want to add a couple of technical details just to round out this. As part of the proposed purchase and development agreement, if Wayne County Commission approves this agreement, which we very much hope that they do, they have eighteen months with a minimum investment of two-point-five million dollars into this project. So it's something that will happen very quick, as they noted with the timeline, somewhere around three-hundred days. And also, as part of that, he mentioned that the county has thresholds as far as, you know, using Wayne County businesses and Wayne County labor, you know, in the construction, and also what kind of jobs are we going to have for the county, you know, when this is open. We have a requirement with the county that thirty percent of the contractors have to be Wayne County-approved contractors, and they've certainly exceeded that, so thank you. And also that the labor needs to be at least sixty percent Wayne County residents, and that's something that we've absolutely built into the contract. We anticipate that there's going to be at least thirty temporary jobs for construction, and also twenty-five full-time jobs once it is open and running. We're very excited about this project, and we hope that you are too. If there's any further questions about legality in the contract, or, you know, how it was negotiated, we'd be happy to answer those questions at this time.
Any questions, contractual questions?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Did you have a mic that we can have people come and talk to?
And if they can just go to the podium, there's also the sign-in sheet as well up there.
All right, so I'm going to open it up to questions, and if you would just come up to the podium, because the meeting is being recorded, I'd like to get, you know, all your comments out. your comments out there. And if you haven't signed in on the sign-out sheet, do that before you leave today. So who wants to be first? Come on up.
Hello, everyone. My name's Wendy Harless. I'm the chairperson of the Plymouth Preservation Network. We're a local nonprofit that advocates for historic preservation in both the city and the township. I'm a longtime resident of the township, I've lived here 48 years, and I have to say, we are absolutely thrilled with this plan. Thank you so much. I said, do we need to stand up and give them a standing ovation? Because this is just amazing. Usually we hear developers say, oh, we gotta get rid of the whole building. It's so great to hear somebody who recognizes that these historic buildings are an asset to our community, they're not an obstacle to economic development, they're not an obstacle to growth in our community. We're just absolutely thrilled that you're going to follow the Secretary of the Interior standards, that you would like to put it on the National Register. My family, we live not very far from here, we're right by Heinz Drive, we ride our bikes down there all the time, so I can completely see us utilizing the green space and going to dinner here, and we're just absolutely thrilled. Thank you so much for doing this for Plymouth.
Anyone else that has a comment or questions? If you come up and just give us your name?
I'm Nancy Darga, I'm the mayor pro temp from the city of Northville, but I'm not here as the mayor, although we do work very closely with Mr. Cox at the Water Wheel. I'm here as the former or retired chief of design for Wayne County Parks. Ironically, I was thinking as I drove here, it's a little deja vu. Plymouth Township is the first place I came to get local support to actually historically register all the Ford Village Industries plants in Wayne County. And I remember sitting in a former Restaurant Friendly's, I think it was, and Maury Green kept me there to midnight with my two-year-old daughter. And then finally Margaret Donning told him to get, get, get it over, you know. So he made me suffer to get that historic designation to that plant, and I still think of that every time I drive by it. But anyways, what I want, there's, really quickly, what I'd like to point out to you, I definitely support the redevelopment of this facility and have the whole 25 years I worked for Wayne County. We had various outside entities make proposals to the park system to use it, but the Wayne County Road Commission wouldn't give it up. I want you to know that Clara Ford deeded this to us after Henry died. If you know the history of it, Henry worked up a deal with the Wayne County Road Commission. If we built the dams and enlarged the headwalls of the ponds, he would give the land to Wayne County Road Commission as park trustees to be the Middle Rouge Parkway. It acts as a floodplain for all of the central part of Wayne County. And I'm gonna stress that because I don't, you guys look like you're old enough to remember, but I've been up there to my waist in water in that back area, so just to let you know, it does flood. And it doesn't take 100 years, because I'm not 100 years and it's done it twice, although I do feel it sometimes. What, also what I want you to know, that it's more than just a Ford Village Industry plant, it was a part of an Indian Trail, it was part of the Underground Railroad during the Civil War, it was a distillery until we went dry for prohibition, and then the distillery moved to the hill there in Heinz Park where we toboggan, and that was known as the Beer Hill. That's how that hill got its name, by the way. And then Henry, of course, bought it to make it one of his first village industries. It is the first and only village industry that he built only for women, only women. Ma Sullivan, she's quite a character, I actually wrote a play about her, worked out of there. Mr. Cox, they didn't do Model Ts, they did B-24 bomber parts, and they did M7 machine gun parts, which is why they had the curtains during the war. All the women that worked here, according to even Margaret Donning, as you know, who's been very generous to Plymouth for the library and stuff, became Rosie the Riveter's. They are the first Rosie the Riveter's. The Department of Interior knows it, California does not, and started a national Rosie the Riveter Park, but to be all honest, it should have been Willow Run. And, and I actually had a nice little verbal exchange with the Smithsonian Institute to get them to correct their signs, which they did, by the way. So what I want you to know, that this is really sacred land of sorts, historically speaking. It is land that actually kind of defined America, and you are the stewards of it. Both the history of the site, but also the environmental impact of the site. This is the biggest lake next to Newburgh in terms of filtering water from the watershed system. It was carved out by Glacier, Glacier Whitley, long before any of us were here, and it still serves that as an aquifer for all of Wayne County, and its environmental significance cannot be underrated. To you, it looks like a river, but if you go underground, it is, it's like the liver, like a liver, filtering out pollutants and stuff for the rest of the watershed that goes down to the Detroit River. And we know, painfully aware now how fragile our water is to contaminants, and we are lucky that we have these impoundments that we're putting in that help us filter the water. I think that this is an exciting project, and it'll do much to offer us an opportunity to interpret the history, but what I am particularly concerned about is the total private ownership of the land. Mr. Cox is a wonderful person, and I would support his project 100%, but when he's gone, what Pandora's box are we creating in terms of just the land, not the building? I really would like us to look at the possibility on all these village industry plants as we go down the river of preserving public access, not because the owner is willing to do it, but because there is public ownership of at least the waterway on the property. And I think, I'm not objecting to what's being proposed, I just want us as steward of the lands to be very careful that we do what Clara Ford wanted us to do, which was put this land in public ownership, so that the people could get to the river, clean the river, have access to the river, and fish the river. And I want to also thank Mr. Cox for being so brave to take a project on like this. It's not, it's not for the faint of heart. When he did, he took over a Northville Bell Plant. I was wondering how, I already knew there was like $2 million worth of asbestos, right? Yeah, because Ford wanted to tear it down, and I was one of the people that chained myself to the Water Wheel and talked him into, you know, not tearing it down, let somebody take over it. But they've done a beautiful job there, and I think they'll do a beautiful job here, and it'll, it'll say much about Plymouth Township. But I also think that as stewards of the land, we have to look at what happened 75, 80, 90 years down the line, that someone doesn't come up with an idea of building a beer and wine store, or condos, or something on the back half of that property. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming up, and your perspective on those various issues. Anyone else? Okay, well, unless you have something else to add, we thank you for coming. It's an exciting prospect here. We wish you the best, and we'll look forward to working together with you all. Okay, thank you.
So what's next?
Next?
Yeah, what are their next steps?
Well, where are you? You want to describe a little bit where you are, what are the next steps?
No, I mean in the process.
Oh, well.
We're gonna be presenting this plan and the proposed purchase and redevelopment to Wayne County Commission tomorrow morning, and we're very much hoping that they approve it at that time. I also wanted to add that we've really talked to not only a lot of community partners such as yourselves, but we've really tried to reach out to the preservation community. The Michigan Historic Preservation Network and the Motor Cities National Heritage Area, which is funded through the National Park Service, have provided letters of support for this project. And we're very happy to have that. As we said, you know, the cultural and architectural heritage of this cannot be, you know, overstated. So, once that goes through, we're going to have, you know, hopefully they approve it tomorrow. Once Wayne County Commission approves, we're going to have a 30-day due diligence period before closing. And once it closes, we'll be, we'll be well on our way. And as I said, once that close happens, within 18 months of that closing, there's a minimum required $2.5 million investment. They said their timeline is about 300 days. So hopefully next year, we can all meet at this restaurant on the property, and, you know, maybe we can all take our bikes, too. It's gonna have some bike parking, and it's the intersection of the Heinz Bike Way and I-275 Metro Trail. So that's, that's kind of the rough timeline on that. We're really excited about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not for this portion. If the property were to be rezoned, that would, of course, require Board of Trustees review.
Yeah. It has to be rezoned?
Yes, right now it's public lands, which the only permitted use is recreation.
When would it go to the Board of Trustees approximately?
That's entirely dependent on the time of the application. We haven't received anything yet. Once they're in their due diligence period formally, then I would anticipate a rezoning application. The planning commission, of course, would hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the board.
So this 18-month period, 18-month period that you were talking about, is that from the day that you actually close?
Correct, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you gotta move pretty fast on that.
And so those?
Because you gotta come to the planning commission and then to the Board of Trustees, right?
Correct.
That's at least two months.
It's probably a month and a half.
So the first, basically, the first month of that 18-month period is gonna be the period that you do the due diligence?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Okay, well, good luck. I think we're all excited.
Thank you so much. And if anyone is available to come and support us at Wayne County Commission tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the Guardian Building in downtown Detroit, we'd love to have everyone there. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just wait a few minutes. It'd be just like, it'd be just like a regular development, but he just didn't wanna. There's still a lot to do, yeah. All right. Well, moving on to the next item? No, you don't, unless you want to hear it more things, you're more than welcome. We're not gonna talk about you.
Much. Not gonna talk about you much.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Application 2302-0818, The Edge Training Center. And Ms. Hall, you have your report?
Thank you, Commissioners. The application before you is for a special land use for a indoor recreation use, The Edge Training Center. The proposed building is an existing industrial facility at 45677 Helm Street, which is in the west, Metro West Industrial Park. There are no changes to the existing building or the site, and any signage would be filed under separate cover with the building department, so that's outside of this process. You know, our findings in general are that the proposed use will permit the reoccupancy of an existing vacant structure. The site, the structure on the site has been vacant for almost a year since September 2017. You know, the reoccupancy of it ensures that it's being maintained, it's kept up, and that there is vitality to one of our industrial districts. Additionally, due to the larger footprint and ceiling heights in industrial facilities, the reuse of the building for recreational use is often ideal. In your packet is a detailed narrative that the applicant has provided about their operations, which was extremely helpful, so thank you for providing that. In terms of their activities there, the facility is aimed to be class-based, and most of the activities will occur between 9, or, excuse me, 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., with most of the activities in the later evening, in the later afternoon, and into the evening till 9:00 p.m. This offsets the traditional industrial park business operation hours from 8:00 or 9:00 to 5:00 or 6:00. So we see this as a, an asset to the traffic flow in Metro West Park and not a disadvantage. Additionally, in terms of parking, given the 43 existing parking spaces on site, a maximum of 129 individuals could, could be in the building, and that is using our current parking standards in Article 24. I'd just like to point out as well that up on the screen here, this is where the, the current facility is on Helm Street, and this is in an industrial district. But on the future land use map of our township's adopted master plan, this area, this whole area here, is planned for light industrial, whereas the more intensive, heavier manufacturing and intensive operations, these are in other districts. So for one, along General Drive, this district here, that's designated to be more intensive warehousing, distribution, packaging, manufacturing. Also, the Plymouth Metro Business Park, which is along Concept, right in here behind Burrows, that's planned for more intensive manufacturing. And then the Plymouth Industrial Center, right here on Echols, this is also a heavy industrial area. So the Metro Industrial Park that we're talking about here, where the subject site is located, is planned to be in the future a less intensive industrial. So this even bodes more complementary to the proposed recreational use. And this is just a photo from Signature Associates of the building as it stands today. I wanted to just give a little bit of background on why this review letter, sort of the planning logic behind promoting the use of recreational uses in an existing industrial facility. This is an article actually from 2013 from Orion Township. They're not the only municipalities in southeast Michigan that have taken a look at allowing recreational uses in industrial districts. Lion Township, for example, has a number of these facilities. But in 2013, Orion Township here was taking a look at if they were to allow recreation facilities in their existing industrial districts. And I have a quote here from the planning commission chair at the time, Todd Bell. He noted, "I would imagine we have buildings big enough to even put indoor soccer fields in. Why wouldn't we want to have something that keeps our kids in town so parents don't have to drive far?" then that is definitely an asset to Plymouth Township. And so, as stated in our review on page three, we're recommending approval of the special land use for this site. And the applicant is here this evening. Should you have further questions, or I'm happy to discuss anything in the review letter. Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate your comments, Laura. I mentioned to Laura in the past, I questioned her, where in the past, we've sort of not wanted to approve these kind of uses in the past. You might remember the trampoline people that wanted to come in back a few years ago. So, she kind of gave me a brief rundown, as she did tonight, just to inform the commission on how some buildings are being repurposed. And as, for example, I used malls. You can see some things already happening at the Lakeside Mall and the Fairlane Mall. They're all using office space or some recreational space for that. So, that was good background.
We do have other areas in here that are training, fitness, some dance.
We have been moving, yeah, we have been moving in that direction.
Yeah, okay.
To do that. So, the applicant is here?
Good evening. I'm Carrie Sherbrooke.
Did you have a presentation or...
I think Laura did an amazing job of explaining what we do. We are very class-based, so we would be different from the trampoline park that you're talking about. That tends to be people just coming whenever they want to go play. This is actually a training facility. It's an athletic program. So, as we train the athletes, it's fun because it's like American Ninja Warrior, but there's strength gains that they get through doing these fun activities. It's kind of like a, I guess you would say it's like a playground on steroids. So, they get stronger, they get a full-body agility type of workout, and then the confidence building that they get by doing things that are constantly changing is huge and kind of translates to all parts of their lives. So, that's what we've heard from many parents. We have a current facility in commerce and have grown about 400% in the last two years. The number of kids that we have in classes continues to grow, and I would say we expect about a 10% to 20% growth again this year.
So, what is American Ninja Warrior? I have no idea.
Oh, I can't believe you're saying that.
I'm an old man.
So, during the summer months, there's a television show. And it's like an obstacle course, and athletes go through this obstacle course.
Oh, I have seen that.
Yeah. So, that's what we do.
Probably ads for it, anyway.
I won several times.
I would have guessed that. I would have guessed that.
I'm doubting that one.
So, what age group are you focusing in on?
Currently, we, in our commerce location, we have preschool classes, starting at three years old. That's a parent-taught class. Then, four years old, they can have their own class, you know, they go through classes by themselves. So, that's, I would say, that's kind of a growing part of that business. The majority of our students are going to be between the ages of, say, seven and 13 or 14. We do have adult classes, too, so I would probably do that same thing in this location. Most of the adult classes come basically from the student participation from the kids. So, it'd be parents of the kids that, you know, that have seen what we do. Some of them are boot camp-type things, or some of them are legitimately like the kids' classes, where they learn how to do the Ninja Warrior stuff.
I'd like to see a few more, a little more information on your use statement here. So, I'll kind of walk you through the questions that I have.
Sure.
There aren't very many of them. So, you give us the hours of operation. About how many people will be, I know you quote about the staff, but about the folks that are coming in to participate in the services that you offer, about how many are there, you know, over a period of a day, you know, or a weekend?
And Laura's comment about the parking is almost exactly what that flow would be. So, the classes last 45 minutes to an hour. Usually, we would have like an eight-to-one ratio from a student to a coach. So, it, the space itself and how we would run classes, it probably would be no more than 40 to 50 actual participants at a time. That would assume that, of course, the parents is bringing them. So, that's going to, that's going to be well under what the parking requirements would be. So, the area that they would be working out in does require a fair amount of space for them to be in. So, it's not a real tight-packed group. A group of eight kids would take at least a quarter of this room and probably half of this room. So, it does take a fair amount of space for the obstacles.
So, do the parents usually stay for the 45 minutes, or do they drop them off and come back? What's typical?
I would say it's 50/50. Some will, you know, depends on what is in the area, and they are able to get done in that amount of time. Where this is located, they would be able to run errands. There's a shopping area that's not very far from there, and it's not really very far from downtown. So, they could definitely drop them off and bring them up or pick them up. I would say our hour-long classes, that's the norm, that parents usually drop them off and pick them up. And with the parking requirements, that would assume that both parents are bringing them, and that's pretty rare. It's usually one parent.
Okay. And then, the comment here about, under the paragraph that you've titled "special events", so about how many competitions do you have?
So, we currently do two to three competitions a year that are, that I would say would be bigger events. But even those bigger events are going to be within this 40 to 60 participant rep at a time. Because what we do is we stagger the amount of, like, we would have one age group come in at one time, another totally separate time. So, even with our current competitions that can be relatively large, a large competition would be not more than 60 at a time. It would be more like that 40 at a time. So, it wouldn't be that different than a normal shift would be. Competitions are always on Saturdays and Sundays, so again, that's not going to impact the industrial part of things, since that's normally a Monday through Friday thing.
And so, who comes to these competitions? Will see the parents come in or...
So, as far as spectators, yeah.
Yes, right.
It would be parents, grandparents, that kind of thing. Our current competitions, they'll attract people from all over. So, sometimes they're people from out of town, sometimes they're people that are currently taking classes. But even within a competition, we would not want more than 40 or so people there at a time, because then they're just waiting around a lot. So, we would purposely stagger that. That's how we would do a competition, anyway. So, it would still pretty much fit into that same, that same number of people in and out at a time.
Okay. And so, Laura, you're happy with the parking calculations and based on this additional information?
Yes. I mean, the applicant has, you know, toured the facility and planned this out so that their operations will be successful. If there's a serious parking issue, then I think they would either limit the class size or provide more staggering in order to accommodate that, because otherwise, that would not be good for your business model.
Right, yeah. We, and I would say, in our current operation, we do not even use that number of spaces. So, the parking was exciting to me to have it all in one place. We've kind of got ours spread out. So, sometimes people have to walk further than what they would have to walk, but we wouldn't even use the current, with our current level of participation at our current station.
Okay. Well, maybe the, your use statement could be modified to just include that information so we're all clear on that.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commission? Yes?
For your events, do you expect to use any of your outdoor space, like the parking lot or anything outside at all?
No, the events are all done inside, because the way an event would be run is depending on age group, they would have a certain course. And everyone within that age group would run that particular course. Putting things outside puts the equipment, you know, then it's going to be exposed to the elements, then we would have to pray for a good day. So, we would never have a competition that would require us to be outside. So, the only thing that's going to be outside is just people coming and going.
Okay. And how soon would you be able to open, do you expect?
Well, I would love to open this month, but I would say aggressively in December, maybe even late November, but definitely by the first of the year. There's, the obstacles themselves don't take that much prep. It's mostly just getting things in and getting them set up. The building is perfect when it's just open, and that's exactly what I need. So, we would not take that long to get going.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, Commissioner, it's all.
Could you describe your commerce facility? And number two, what kind of build-out do you see in this facility?
That's the exciting thing for me. Our commerce facility has two, I guess you would call them two separate gyms. One gym that would accommodate kids from seven to adults. So, that's going to be the larger obstacles, things that are just average size. Then I have another gym that's for smaller athletes, so that's for the littles. And they are separated. Their obstacles are smaller, they're smaller bodies, smaller mass, so they just can't do the bigger obstacles, but they can still do the movements. So, the two mezzanines that are currently in the building are perfect. One is great for viewing, so we encourage the parents to hear what we're coaching. We want them to know what we're saying, and then...
Is that in an industrial...
It would be considered the light industrial. It's got, the front part of the building is very similar to the front part of Helm Street. It's got offices, which we have converted into a workout, like a weightlifting room, and then one is a birthday party room. So, it's very similar to the setup at Helm. And then, there's just the big box that's in the back. So, the, as far as the build-out, it won't require a lot. It's just simply getting those obstacles built and put in there. And many of which will come, like, you know, it's assembly there, but they'll be built elsewhere.
Okay. All right. Yes?
So, in your commerce site, how many students do you have there?
Right now, we have almost 400 enrolled on a week, that come on a weekly basis.
400 on a weekly basis?
And that's over five days. So, we're not, we don't have classes, like organized classes on Sunday. That's usually when we do birthday parties, and then we do have an open gym for adults. But then, the rest of the, the rest of the days, it's 4:45 is our earliest class. Our last class ends 8:15, I think, is the latest.
How does this facility compare to your commerce facility in terms of size?
This one's bigger.
This one's bigger, so it would accommodate more students?
It would, but it would still, I would say, it would accommodate more of the older students. So, it would accommodate a little bit fewer of the younger students. So, it's still going to be, and I commit to my students and my parents that it's never more than an eight-to-one ratio, so it still would not be more than an eight-to-one ratio. So, it's all a matter of being able to move people around the gym. I would say 60 would be the highest number that we would put in the gym at any one time.
Okay. So, given the nature of your business, what is the frequency of injuries in your commerce facility?
Very minimal.
Very minimal.
It is considerably less dangerous than gymnastics and karate. Gymnastics goes upside down. We don't go upside down.
No, no, I get that.
And so, most of the, I mean, any injuries are, they're ruled ankles, that sort of thing. Every now and then, you get a broken wrist because they're landing with their arm straight. So, the number of injuries has been very small over the course of the...
Okay. So, at the end of the day, the, this is not a drop-in facility.
No, no.
It's strictly classes.
Correct. The only, the only open gym drop-in kind of thing that we would do would be adults-only. I don't believe in having open gym for kids. It's not safe. They don't learn anything. Then they'll do two or three things, they won't know how to do the other things. It's not a successful business model. So, I would not do open gym for kids here either.
But it would be for adults?
There is open gym for adults, with the caveat of there's always coaches there. So, there's always two to three coaches, even during an adult open gym. So, there's never a time where you can just go in. It's not like a lifetime fitness, where you would go in and work out and then leave. The open gym is between four and seven, and there's at least two coaches there so that they can supervise and make sure that people are doing things the way we intend them to do.
What is the address of your commerce facility?
3285 Martin Road, and it's Suite 101.
And are we welcome to pop by?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Other questions at this end? Yes, go ahead.
Just, did I understand you to say, I'm trying to figure out how many classes you have running concurrently?
It depends on, so I would say four to possibly six. Each one of those is going to kind of depend on how many kids are enrolled. So, I would say four is probably going to be the more common number.
And then, the max number of participants is eight, is that...
Eight-to-one, eight. So, it would be eight in each class, right?
Right. Okay.
Is there an association, excuse me, is there a regional, national competition these students or athletes go on to?
Yeah, so there are, there are lots of local-ish things where we would be with gyms that are, there are several gyms in this area. So, there are some competitions that would go on with just those gyms. But then, there are two leagues, the National Ninja League and the UNAA, which is the United National Ninja Athletes. At any rate, two that link all of the gyms that are nationwide. We have participated in both of those. This, now we're part of the UNAA. So, there will be competitions that people will know about this location or the commerce location through those agencies. So, it will attract other, you know, people from elsewhere. But for the most part, it's going to be somewhat regional. And even the local competitions, we, like, we had competitions this summer on Saturdays, and it was basically just the kids that were enrolled in our classes. So, there's like 20 kids at a time, but it's a fun way for them to kind of learn how to compete and see if they want to be on our competition team.
What is the cost to attend one of these classes?
We, currently, we do classes by month, like, by a month at a time. So, a month, a 45-minute class is going to be $8.5, and then $89 for an hour-long class. I think the price point would be a little bit higher. It's probably going to be more like a 90, 92, but I haven't come up with that just yet. And we do have a website that you're welcome to go to that kind of explains everything. So, and it's just called theedstrainingcentermi.com. And you can kind of see what we, you know, how I configure the classes.
Edge Training Center, what was the last part?
The Edge Training Center MI for Michigan.
Oh, MI, oh, okay.
And we also have a Facebook that's, it's going to be the same thing, that has lots of pictures and videos and that sort of thing. But the website does also have a lot of pictures and a lot of videos that you can look at.
Anything else from anybody? Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve application 2302-0818 to grant special land use approval for indoor recreational uses at 45677 Helm Street.
Support.
You support? Okay. Wubba Commissioner Pastel and supported by Commissioner Harp to grant special land use to application 2302-0818. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Welcome to the community.
Yes, okay. All right. Is there anyone here that has any comments on the topic that we didn't cover? No, nothing? Okay. Then, moving on to other Planning Commission business and communication. So, Ms. Howell, do you have anything?
I just hope everyone got the emails that I had sent out this week regarding the fire access. And I believe two weeks ago or so, there is an email about the fire standards for parking on residential streets. I'll bring all these requirements back from the Fire Department as we review projects where it's relevant, but I wanted everyone to know that we...
All right, is there anyone here that has any comments on the topic that we didn't cover? No, nothing, okay. And moving on to other Planning Commission business and communication, so Ms. Howe, do you have anything?
I just hope everyone got the emails that I had sent out this week regarding the fire access, and I, I believe, two weeks ago or so, there is an email about the fire standards for parking on residential streets. I'll bring all these requirements back from the, from the Fire Department as we review projects where it's relevant, but I wanted everyone to know that we have this material, and it's in quite a digestible form that the Police Department put it in, so.
I guess my one question on this email that I got this week with the picture and so forth?
Yes.
I understand, and this obviously is a residential situation. I, I'm trying to figure out how that fits into industrial and commercial, because you don't have what you're looking at here generally in industrial and commercial.
In terms of the landscaping along the perimeter?
Well, in terms of access, you know, over, over grass rather than pavement?
Well, maybe not, maybe not currently, but I think as we look at some sites moving forward, especially along the Five Mile Corridor, where we're going to be seeing large industrial proposals, I think that this would be a nice, softer, natural treatment, and it certainly is, is the preference of the Fire Department.
Now, will, will this be communicated with the applicants when they come in, so that there are no surprises once they lay out a site plan?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. And, and there's a process in place where you'll be notified if there are changes, because I noticed that sometimes some, some of the requirements of the Fire Department change over a period of time.
Well, we'll work with the Fire Department on, on that communication. They've been very forthcoming and helpful, and they've, they've changed the way that the reviews will be delivered. I think you saw that, and the commission saw that with the last Beck Road Hotel review, where there were specific comments that the chief had listed, and that'll be more of the standard going forward, not just the section number, because even that, you know, I'm not, I am not familiar with the code that intimately, so it should help everyone.
Yeah, that would be helpful, if they were a little more specific as to what they like or don't like, or?
Yes.
All right. Do you have anything else other than the?
No, not at the moment. I think I included in the one email that we are going to be receiving, we just received this week, the site plan tentative review for the Hillside Residences, the former Courtyard Girl site. And it, it is the understanding that Ned and Leo's developments with Five Mile and Beck, the Commercial Plaza, and also the Beck Road Hotel development will be coming back at a future date. We just don't have the revised plans. We've had meetings with them again in August, and they have their marching orders.
Okay. And where, where do we stand with this historical district, given the applicant that was here today? Have you met with the Township Administration yet, or?
No, we'll be, we'll be meeting, I think, in October with the administration on that, as well as, we'll be meeting with the administration in October, early October, with the Building Department as well for the fence standards, and hopefully, we'll be bringing that back before everyone in October. Oh, no, there's been more ZBA requests for that.
Okay. Anything from the commission?
Yeah, I would just, that, that was going to be my question, is where are we at with the wording for the fences? Because zoning board of appeals has four applications this year, this, in October?
Yes.
And three of them are about fences. So, this deluge is not waning, let's put it that way.
Yes, and the, the Building Department has shared that.
Yeah. Anything else?
I was wondering if the, if the board trustees had recognized that Kathy's previous duty, or anything for her, in any meeting? She was a, a pretty good asset, she did her job very well.
Yeah, yeah, she was great.
And I, I don't recall having seen anything in the meeting in recognizing her in any way, shape, or form, and I, she was here for a very long time.
I will pass it on.
Would you, I think it would be commendable for, for you guys to kind of recognize her in some way.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, she was here for twenty-eight years.
Yeah, a long time, and that's a tough position.
It is.
It is really a tough position.
It's going to be hard to fill, is what it's going to be.
Yeah, it's going to be very difficult.
All right, if there's anything else, nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt, supported by Commissioner Barberina to adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-seven. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.